This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, that's not pretty, say. I wouldn't do that to anybody.
So I'm glad we're staying with any questions?
I believe in these citizens of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the second Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting for this morning. It's 10 o'clock, Tuesday, March 11, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on donation to Stacyville Daycare for state grants. You may come up and talk. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I am Savannah Nelson. I'm the current director of the Stacyville Kids Care.
Just grab a couple of chairs there for the other two. Might make it easier.
We have to end if we want.
Oh, no.
I am Alicia Beeson. I am the vice president and treasurer for the board.
I am Haley Gerst, and I am assistant director.
Welcome.
Yeah. So a little backstory to Stacyville Kids Care. We have proudly served the area for over 30 years as a self-started and self-funded daycare. It's been one of the longest-running daycares in Mitchell County. Through hard work and dedication, we have been able to serve and nurture the children of Mitchell County. That's just a little backstory on us, and we are currently facing some challenges. One of the two biggest challenges that we are facing is, one, we are in the basement of the community center in Stacyville, which is not the ideal place for a daycare, but we've made it work this long. Some of the biggest space, some of the biggest challenges is the spacing limitation that we face. So if you have not been to the community center basement, it is one large room with two classrooms, basically. At this point in time, we have reached our capacity. While we have the square footage to take on more children, we do not have the classroom space. We do not have state requirement guidelines to do so. We also do not have the option to expand and/or build in our current facility because of fire marshal regulations. As of right now, we serve 29 children, which has grown from seven in January of last year. We have a waitlist of over 15 children, and that is not counting the families that we've had to turn away because they did not want to be placed on a waitlist. So what we have done is we have gone to the city council and asked to make a new community center slash daycare combined under one roof. With this pledge and agreement, what we will be able to do is we will be able to house more children, and we will be able to bring in more revenue to Mitchell County, decrease the limitations on the daycare. We currently have, as Savannah said, a 15-plus children waitlist for the baby and toddler room. So what we could do is increase by $720 to $820 a child each month if we were able to place those children. And in the email that I sent this morning, sorry that you guys got it a little late. We tried to send it last night, but apparently it didn't go through. There is a breakdown of all of the financial aspects of what each child could bring, what each age group could bring, what we would pay staff as a breakdown, so you guys can see that as well. This is such a big project for us just because, one, it would not only help Stacyville, but it will help Mitchell County. It will bring funds to Mitchell County. It would bring more families to Mitchell County, and it will decrease the massive need of daycare in Mitchell County right now. We also will have the city of Stacyville be the owner of the building. That way, that keeps that longevity of it in Mitchell County and the community. Some of the major benefits of having a new combined community center and daycare is the economic impact. With a newer building, it will have significant lower maintenance costs. If you've ever been in the basement of the community center, it's an old building. There's not much heat. The flooring needs to be done, all new windows. There's hardly any insulation. So we kind of are just a money pit on utility costs every month. And renovations. We need a lot of renovations. A new facility for the community center side will also increase the revenue for rentals. Looking at comparisons around the area, Grafton has some rental areas, South Square in St. Ansgar has some rental areas. So bringing in more opportunity for funerals to be held, weddings to be held. We have a beautiful remodeled church right across the street in Stacyville. So we could have receptions from weddings or anything along those lines, really bringing in the funding to Stacyville and Mitchell County. Another big push for this project is, right now, the community center is not handicap accessible. So we have a large population of Stacyville and surrounding areas that are not able to utilize this space because it is not handicap accessible. With this, and I know we touched on it just a minute ago, but right now, we are licensed to serve 50 children. With this new building, we would expand from two classrooms to six with the flexibility of changing them as our needs change. All of the rooms would be fire marshal, up-to-code, state-regulated, to be available space for all ages. So if our need in the next five years is infant and toddler, but that switches to older kids, we would be able to make those changes because we'd have that flexible space. In the paper that you also received, there was a breakdown of what space availability now, our enrollment, versus what it could be in the new building. So right now, we can only have four children from the ages of six weeks to one year. With this new building, we would be able to increase that number to 12. And so on and so forth in that chart you can see. So we would be able to go from 50 available spots to 95 available spots for Mitchell County. And these guidelines are based off the state. The state does not allow four-year-olds to be mixed with five-year-olds, two- and three-year-olds to be mixed with four-year-olds, et cetera, just because of the learning development. They have to be separated. Right now, we currently have an exception to policy which allows us to combine those classrooms. However, that expires in June. We do not think that we would get it again because our numbers have grown so much. We got this exceptional policy when we had such a low number of children. Does anybody have any questions so far?
So you said the city will own the building. As far as the ground also, they'll know, the ground and the building. Who currently owns it now? City does, okay.
And right now, we pay rent in the building. That would continually, that would help financially support the community center as well.
So your 501(c)(3) nonprofit?
Correct.
All right.
Yep. So just a little bit of the financial overview. The current building that we touched on has major needs for update, to be updated to code. Right now, we are not meeting code on certain things. We do not have hot water at the daycare due to the water heater being broken at this point. The floors need to be redone. There's no hot or no heat in the kitchen currently because of leaking windows. Savannah touched on it, not being handicap accessible. There's just multiple renovations to the current system or current building that would cost way more than just funding a new building at this time. And even if we were to make all of these improvements, even if we were to fund and make the improvements for this current building, we still cannot add on additional classrooms for the daycare. So that's why we're really pushing to build a just brand-new facility that will benefit not only Stacyville, but all of the county. While we do not have plans finalized, we do not have finalized estimates. We do have a breakdown of a new building cost based on the people that we've talked to, architects, contractors, people on local and federal levels, just about a general breakdown of what a daycare would cost. What we are asking for today, we are strictly asking for, to go towards a pledge for the Ashley Henson Fiscal Year Community Funding Project. We found out about this specific grant on February 26th, and our plan was just to apply for it, and it was going to be great. However, Friday evening at 6:00 p.m., because of Stacyville's size of the community and the poverty line where all of the community members reside, we have to have 25% of whatever we ask for in pledges. So that's why this is on such a short timeline. That's why we don't have finalized plans. That's why we don't have finalized estimates. We initially were going to apply for a million dollars. When you break down just the costs that it will cost for the Stacyville Daycare Center, on the lower end, it would be about $1.2 million, and on the higher end, it would be about $1.4 million. The range that we got per square foot would be about $180 to $200 per square foot. We are looking at a 7,000-square-foot building for the daycare specifically. So we need about $250,000 in pledges to apply for that million-dollar grant. If we do not receive the 250, we will still apply for this grant with whatever we have been able to receive up to this point. As of this morning, we already have $40,000 in pledges to go towards this grant. And later today, we are going to keep working and trying to get as many as we are able to do so by the end of the day. Savannah, myself, and Haley are going to go talk to some local businesses.
You said you want $250,000, $270,000?
Jim, we want to apply for the million dollars. If you would like a more broken-down estimate of what the building will cost, we did provide that. We broke it down into construction costs, site development, furnishings, the outdoor play area, and then other miscellaneous fees. When you add up all of that, including the playground, it would be close to $1.5 million. With that, we also provided some new daycare projections for the financial aspect of the daycare. Because as of right now, we do only serve 29, it's hard to imagine us going from 29 to 95 children. We understand that that's a big jump. But we have seen from not only our waitlist, but talking to people in the community, the new developments happening in Stacyville, that we know more younger families will be coming to the community. And if we do have this concrete daycare, we are hoping that brings in more families into Mitchell County. The advantage for parents to go to a community center daycare versus an in-home, there's a lot of benefits, a little bit more structured, they have later hours usually. Where Stacyville is located, even across into Minnesota, there is no community center daycare in Rose Creek, Lisle, Adams. You could be drawing families from Minnesota to Stacyville. So what we're asking for today is a pledge of $125,000 to go towards a great, this matching Ashley Henson grant. And if you think about it, this is more than just a matching grant. It's almost a three-for-one, as we would provide 25%, and they would provide the other 75%. Given the current challenges that we are facing at Stacyville Kids Care and the deadline to submit this grant by tomorrow at 5:00 p.m., we are hoping that you will take into consideration everything we've said and help us out. And we greatly appreciate you both taking the time for this meeting to hear a thought on this.
How do you plan to pay for the rest of the building after, I mean, doesn't it sound like the grant's going to pay for the whole thing? What's your plans on paying for the rest of it?
We're going to continue to look at grants through other sites versus just the state of Iowa. There's some local grants that are given as well, fundraising that we already have scheduled to do. We have an upcoming food drive-through fundraiser and local support. We do also know that Kim Reynolds is pushing to do another grant opportunity similar to what Ricefield did this last December. They just have not officially announced that yet.
When we do daycares, I know it said in the sheet, once you start construction, payment will be due. But don't we normally do it when it's completed?
They did with St. Ansgar.
And we did that with Osage, didn't we?
Before our gun.
Osage just was before, because it took them a couple of years to build it.
Yeah, I think they had to come and have a big kind of presentation with all like concrete numbers. They had all that kind of ahead of time. So there's.
We do have plans in the works. We just haven't gotten finalized because everything was kind of pushed forward with this grant being said it's due tomorrow.
We are hoping to have our plans tomorrow. But because the deadline of the grant is tomorrow, we did not think that that would be applicable time to move forward. Initially, we want to secure our funding so that we're actually able to pay for the building versus, okay, we just built this huge building, and how are we going to pay for it? So then we need real funding opportunities prior to. One of our, one of our goals is to not have to raise any taxes on anything in Stacyville or Mitchell County to do this because it's not fair of us to say we need a new building, but then make everybody else pay for it.
So I just wanted to reiterate what, I touched base with Rachel this weekend, and in 2019, I think you all have that information that, and I remember when the Osage was granted $150,000, and St. Ansgar was granted $100,000. And at that time, St. Ansgar had no idea what they were even going to use the daycare money for. So, and Stacyville was allowed $25,000, some change, to update their ovens and their, you know, cook stoves in the current facility. And I would imagine you would be able to use those, that equipment in your new facility. So that would also decrease some of your initial startup costs as well.
Everything that we have now, all of our furnishings, all of our childcare stuff, we would be able to utilize all of it. We've been slowly raising money and trying to replace those to keep those up to date.
I'm definitely in favor of the daycares. They're very important. The money that we have issued before was for daycares. I'm a little nervous of having that community center and daycare with the rest of the cities that all of a sudden, you know, oh, we want to build a community center, add on. Are they going to come to us? We're really not here to contribute, I think, to community centers. I'm definitely in favor of daycare facilities.
So this specific grant cannot be utilized for the community-side portion of the building. As a city entity, they are not allowed to apply for the Ashley Henson grant. But we, as a daycare, as our 501(c)(3), we can apply. So all funds that we receive for this specific grant will go towards the daycare portion only.
And that's the one, that's the one, I think you said 1.4 million?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
That's the daycare.
That's the daycare.
Daycare costs.
Right. And the community center costs.
Completely different, yeah. And we would, we know we're partnering with the city, so we will find more grants and raise all those funds as well.
So Rachel, have we paid for it out of this coming year where it would be taken out of, if they need it by late '25?
I would guess local option would be the only option.
The only option, because our budget is pretty well set. We're going to have a budget hearing soon, so.
You'd have to do a budget amendment either way, whichever fiscal year it comes out of.
And you don't need it in this fiscal year. You need it in '25, '26.
Correct, yep.
Right.
The Ashley Henson.
Yes, I know. I'm saying we already have our budget for '25, '26 done, so I'm saying.
The Ashley Henson does not grant the award until '26 or the funds at that time. Yep, it's a fiscal year.
Does that grant, does that grant fund based on substantial completion of the project? Or increment amounts during construction? Or are you aware of how that's structured?
It sounds, so it sounds like based on just the size of Stacyville and the project that we are going for, there are subcategories of this grant, and we fall under rural development. That specific one, that's why we have to come up with the 25% versus 75. So I think that's just their general.
But I'm just wondering, does she just send you, I'll pick a number, does she just send you a million dollars or whatever, and then you use that to build? Or does she say, I want to see that it's substantially complete, and now I'll send you the million dollars? You know?
I actually do not know that.
Okay. And the reason I ask then is because most times this is brought up that when we do this, we wait for substantial completion before we actually award something rather than sending money, and then it just sits in a bag until, until.
And I mean, that would be the goal. We would not want, you know, we wouldn't want people to give all their pledges until well into the project. And I would imagine that construction workers and all of our spent people, they would understand that this would be an after-completion project.
You would probably need, though, you would probably need funding through the project or a construction loan of some sort from somebody, because they're not going to just wait for a year and a half till the building's done for their money either. So I just didn't know how you knew how that was going to work for yourself.
So this pledge, we have to have this amount to even be able to apply for this grant, and that is what we're looking for. This grant only accepts 15 people out of the entire Iowa whoever applies. So there is a chance that we still might not be awarded this grant if we're not one of the 15. How it's specified in it is it takes the urgency, the community support, and how important this project is to the development of the community.
On your grant, there's probably county supervisors are willing to, if we are, willing to. So that would, that would help your grant, right? Probably that if we were willing to support it and possibly put money towards it.
Yep, there is an area that you can write a letter of support, which would be extremely beneficial in this situation, I think.
We've done that before.
I would like to say.
Yes.
Stacyville is a viable town, which helps Mitchell County, because we just added another loving lots to Gordy's addition. Steve Eastman's building houses, you know? So we are a growing town, and this would help us also and still help Mitchell County.
Thank you.
Yes, Jenny?
Can I say something? Yeah, and you guys probably know that you heard this from me, that childcare is so important. Having childcare open and available, and if they can increase their slots. Right now, they're restricted. They can't take kids. I mean, if you want people to come here, work here, live here, you know, you have to make those things available because a lot of times, daycare is the deal-breaker. When people are looking at taking jobs, there's lots of jobs here, so many jobs, good jobs, career jobs. But sometimes, at the end of the day, it's going to be a time, there's no daycare availability or there's no housing. It's usually one of those two things that are deal-breakers. And we need workforce here, I mean, everywhere, hiring some businesses, or, you know, need more employees and others. But this would be a great opportunity for you guys to help support Stacyville. And, you know, if they can reach this million-dollar goal and come up with $250,000 in community support, because that is where they're at, they need $250,000 to get to 700, to get $750,000 from its federal money that's directed towards nonprofits and, you know, other areas of the state. That's awesome. Like, that's a verb of, it's a three-to-one grant. Typically, we've seen like a one-to-one. This is better. Ashley Henson will only, she covers District Two Congressmen, or District Two for the state of Iowa. And so they will only choose 15 projects, and they will pick the best of the best, the ones that are going to make the most impact. It's just really a great opportunity, and I'm really encouraging you guys to help them and help the city of Stacyville.
Is the $40,000 including the $25,000 from the city last night? Yes.
If you don't get this grant, what happens to the pledge money?
We will use any pledges collected for this grant on the next available one. And again, because Kim Reynolds has made comments that she is trying to raise another big grant. She's looking at 16 million this year instead of 14 million. We would use that for those grants in the future. There is just no idea of when that would become available. You know, that might not happen until 2027, 2028. Due to this one, she did the last one for 2025. Ashley Henson's is for 2026. We just don't know when that would be in our current waitlist. We are worried that they're going to find daycare elsewhere. You need daycare as a parent, and if you have a 15-baby waitlist that we can't serve, they're going to pull them. We also have current families that are trying. So there are currently kids that are toddlers. If we can't take their baby, do we risk them pulling their toddler as well and going elsewhere? And we don't want to do that. The other thing that Jenny kind of mentioned as well, with this new facility, we would be able to expand our employees to 20 employees, opening up that job market for Mitchell County as well.
So market assets, I just want to clarify. So the, so the city is putting in $25,000, and so that means you get $15,000 of, the $40,000 includes the city's grant?
Yeah.
That was the answer to that?
Yep.
I would have liked to have seen the grant so I could have read it before the meeting. It would have been nice, but that's beside the point. That did not happen. So I would assume you have to have a set of plans to submit when you submit for this grant. I mean, they're.
They did not say the plans were required.
Really? Wow.
Yeah, that's what we said.
Wow.
But their plans should be coming from the architect.
But we will have plans tomorrow to provide for the grant.
Yeah. So there's just different, it just seems odd. It may even from this board to award something when there's really nothing definite set up. And I would assume that they would have required, well, we need to know what you're going to do before we might go award any grant.
If it would help, I can share the very first round of the building draft with you, if that would help you to kind of visualize what the building would look like. But again, they're not finalized. We have a lot of. Yeah.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. That surprised me that it's not required, okay?
And we did ask some of those clarifying questions with her team, and that was the response that we did not receive until Friday night.
We'll make a motion for $125,000 for the Stacyville Daycare.
I second it.
Oh, okay. Well, no more discussion?
Do you have discussion at this time?
Mark made a motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
How did you word it?
$125,000 for Stacyville Daycare.
Okay, so.
Pledge.
The.
Right.
So we're in discussion, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So on my end of it, the donation goes towards the state grant match. I'm not going to support $125,000 to send them for future, for future building projects if this grant does not happen. So I want that to be clear. I don't know how you worded it, but the agenda item is for the state grant.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarified question? So that would mean that if this grant does not get approved, we would come back for the next grant? Okay.
You can come back anytime you want, yeah. But this is for the state grant.
Yep.
As it's worded on here.
Yep.
So I just want to make clear that I'm understanding that in 2019, there was not grant money coming from Osage, and there wasn't any grant money coming from St. Ansgar. I guess I'm wondering, you know, if they're out there actively seeking grants, getting grants, working towards getting donations, why we would treat Stacyville somewhat differently? Maybe is my question.
It should have been worded on here then without state grant.
Then when the St. Ansgar one happened, that I remember the board had made a decision that we were not going to send money until there's substantial completion of the, so, and so when that happened, then we did send the money. So.
Right, but at the time that the money was awarded, there was no plan in place.
That was before us, as far as.
I'm just saying, and that was former boards. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know.
It says, "Discussion and possible action on donation to Stacyville Daycare for state grant."
Yep.
So this $125 pledge, $125,000 pledge.
Is towards your.
Is towards the state grant. If they do not receive the state grant, then they will have to come back and do this all over again.
Okay.
Okay. There's a motion, and there's a second. Any further discussion? Brooke, Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Tom?
Motion passes.
Thank you guys very much for taking the time.
Good job. We're not doing any public comments. We're not doing any public comments, right? All right. We will adjourn at 10:29.